We're here to talk about the stormwater utility and I don't know how you want to progress. If you just want to talk about the projects or you want to talk about it conceptually first or it's up to you guys.
Well, you know, conceptually, I don't think we're going to know the concept until we have the study and the study will drive, you know, what is reasonable from the perspective of permeable surface and, you know, it needs to be something that's reasonable as far as a property owner is concerned. And so, you know, when you look at your revenue here of, you know, five million three fifty, I don't think that's worth discussing because I think we're going to have to figure out what that is. I'm on page two eleven on the red number.
That number is no more meaningful than the number that's required to keep these numbers at the bottom from being negative. So it really was just a backfill until we, until we get the concept nailed down and find out how much you really want to raise.
And I think as far as the projects go, correct me if I'm wrong, and there's some other things in here like the acquisition of the vehicle, the first one, but we're committed to Old Town and McCamish and then that's what we're committed to.
That's the two that we have, have applied for grants for and we're waiting to hear the status of those grants. But before we jump into those, just to give you a quick update where we are, we have another meeting scheduled with the consultant on Thursday. They have submitted a proposal. We have looked at it and we have recommended some areas that they could possibly shave some of the hours, shave some of the tasks, combine some meetings. So we'll get back with them, talk about those, get a revised proposal and then hopefully have you something in front of you the first of August at your council meetings.
Which is August nineteenth.
Yeah, not till then. The middle of August.
Yeah, August nineteenth.
Yeah, we're not, today's the deadline for the July meeting and our...
Not tomorrow.
No, I don't think there's any great urgency. The question is to consider the fall and come up with good decisions. That's...
The only timing issue is that if we adopt a budget this way in a fund that doesn't exist with no revenue source, none of these projects can actually be pursued until we figure out if they're A) going to be funded separately in a stormwater utility or B) whether we have to actually roll them back into Fund 304 and reallocate the rest of those monies. So that's going to be something where we just have to stay in kind of close coordination. As you pointed out, Mayor, the lease purchase debt for fifteen sixteen is something we're already committed to. So again, worst case scenario, if that plus the actual study itself, if we ultimately decided not to fund a stormwater utility, that two hundred or one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars worth of expenditures would have to go back into Fund 304 and compete for those scarce resources and any other of these stormwater projects you wanted to do anyway would have to be rolled back into 304 and then we would have to reduce street paving or something else.
Well, there's another one here too that I think we're committed to which is the Vero Isles Outfall. Is that not correct?
Yeah, we're, that's a project that we already had developed in before we talked about a stormwater utility and we'll be moving forward with that as, you know, funding and time permits regardless of how we do that.
But as funding permits includes deciding whether we're going to fund it this way or whether it has to go, in other words, without this funding source, we can't do all of these projects plus all the projects in 304. And if we step out on all of them and then decide not to create this funding source, we would have a deficit.
But we have till September to decide which ones we'll do or not do. Looking at Vero Isles Outfall, I mean, I would have the opinion we would do it from the stormwater utility and, but, you know, when you get stormwater system rehabilitation for five hundred thousand dollars, I think...
And the way we developed the, the impetus for this is we've looked for what capital needs. We had it for the stormwater, for the pollution control aspect and then for a lifecycle replacement cost for the system. The way we developed that, we went out and looked at the number of structures we had, fifteen hundred structures and put a value on them of five thousand structures, excuse me, and fifteen hundred dollars a structure. And then we looked at all the pipes, the sizes and the lengths and looked at a replacement cost. And we came up with a cost to replace the whole system and then did it over a fifty year lifecycle. That's what developed that five hundred thousand dollar a year recurring R and R number.
That's the number we cut to two hundred thousand last year.
Well, it's what we've had at that. We've never had it at a place where we would be on a fifty year lifecycle replacement. So...
I'm confused. I'm confused over the commitment to now to do Vero Isles. Is that, are we double counting? Is it in?
We can't spend money, we can't spend money that we don't have. So the revenue source you see here doesn't exist until you establish a stormwater utility. So if council wanted to proceed with Vero Isles in the absence of funding for it, it would have to go back into 304 and we would have to lower something else. No, no, it's not there. All the stormwater, and that's what I'm saying, all the stormwater projects have been removed from 304. So that 304 budget you just reviewed has no stormwater projects in it whatsoever except for the twenty-five grand a year for the little bit of, you know, ongoing maintenance.
We had something for Vero Isles and McCamish Park. What was that?
No, we don't.
No.
Randy, what you would be doing...
It was in fourteen fifteen and it was, it was pushed forward into fifteen sixteen.
We talked about the surfacing projects that would go...
That was, that was the surfacing project. It was a, I'm sorry.
In combination with...
I'm confused.
But why can't we divide these into two categories? Vero Isles being one and the other, and some portion of the stormwater rehabilitation service and then look at the other ones when we finish the work on it. It's a little, I hate to be cliche, but it's chicken or the egg. In other words, I'm, I'm, I don't think we can commit to a level of funding until we have the study, that's all. And I don't, at least for myself, I don't want to go hog wild on, on funding, you know.
Dick, I think what you're saying is exactly right in the fact what you would do as an example, the Vero Isles Outfall, if, if we decide we don't want a stormwater utility somewhere down the line and between now and September, you take out three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars out of street paving as an example and you put it in here. And that's how you fund it.
In other words, as you push, as you push these back over into Fund 304, you don't have enough and something else has to give. So it would be a budget amendment of some kind. My concern being though, we can't go far enough down the road that we've assumed we're going to have both and spent both and now the budget amendment is a negative number right now.
Well, you know, I don't know, but this is maybe simplistic. I mean, looking at this provisionally, I just run with it and then we'll come back knowing that it's going to have to change. I mean...
Have a budget amendment at the worst.
Yeah, because, you know, if a million three fifty reflects a cost that's unacceptable, then we have to deal with it. I mean, I mean, I'm the one that would like to fix everything in five years, but that may not, we may not be able to do that.
Well, what we're going to get when we get the study is the, is the, is the manner to take our, all of our impervious surface, come up with what it is for one ERU, one equivalent residential unit. So then you take that number and then whatever budget number we decide that we want to do, whether it be this or whether it be more, whether it be less, that then equates to what the rate is per homeowner. So it's just a mathematical equation, you know.
It's like any other utility. You're setting a fee based on what you projected the needs of that utility.
So what we're looking at here is what we're, you're recommending we spend the first year and the next five years on stormwater.
That's correct.
And if the consultant then says, okay, to do all these, it's a fee of X per household and you decide that that's too much...
Thirty-five bucks is too much.
Then, you say, half of that works for me. This becomes half of that revenue and these projects have to be revised accordingly.
So what does that kind of come out at? I mean, if it's, if it's a million three, we have no idea?
We haven't done that math yet. So, I mean, I, you did some preliminary numbers, but...
We looked at others and we think we're somewhere in the six to ten dollar a month per residential unit, but that's just a ballpark number to look at until we get it all...
And that would, that, yours, your saying that that would add up to this million three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But all I'm suggesting is we can spend a lot of time fooling with this and what Jim said is right. If something, if it's amended such that there's not the money, it'll come out of the streets, which I'll fight.
Or whatever.
Or whatever, I'll fight about, but the reality is, I think, you spend a lot of time and critique these projects, I think it wastes of time.
A million three would be about another twenty-five percent tax increase if we were going to raise that from property tax.
We generate five and some change a year, so about twenty-five percent.
About twenty-five percent on top of what we're already talking on thirty. Just want to get those numbers out there. I also have a question. I know we did the study and we said that the, we found that the city of Vero Beach was exceeding the reductions required by the DEP for nitrogen and phosphorus. What, what further reductions are we expecting from this expenditure of one point three million?
Well, we're exceeding as a whole, but we still have, I think that report said we have about thirty-five percent of our watershed that has some kind of treatment system on it.
Right, that aren't untreated.
As we move forward, we, the ultimate goal is to have treatment on the whole watershed. And as we implement these projects, we would get closer to having, you know, a hundred percent treatment.
That's very nice, but it doesn't answer my question because I'm looking for what the reductions are for the nitrogen and phosphorus.
You have said in the past that we're okay with regulation right now, but you fear that we won't be. That's what you've said. Now, I don't know where that comes from.
If Rob Bolton's here, one of the, one of the main reasons that we meet their requirements is because we have zero discharge from the wastewater treatment plant. One of the big nitrogen and phosphorus loadings to the lagoon was the effluent that came out of the wastewater treatment plant. When we went to zero discharge into a reuse system, that was, that's really what gave us, you know, that first shot in the arm to get started with meeting those reductions.
But it is a fair question. I mean, how, how far are we ahead of regulation?
And what's the, and what's the financial analysis? I mean, where is the, you know, the cost benefit, you know, relationship for expending this funds?
But we, but we know that nitrogen goes in from the stormwater and we know that this is going to stop some of that. And so we've got to do this at some particular time. What we were talking about doing it is over a twenty-year period and we were all kind of saying twenty-year period?
Nineteen.
You know, nineteen, okay. That's, that's not fast enough. We've got to, our community wants it quicker than that. So that's why we came up with this stormwater.
And the other thing too is we have a crumbling infrastructure that we're going to have to fix that we don't have the money to fix. So it's still, it'll do, it's...
Now, you're seeing, yeah, half of it going to repair and replacement, you know, of existing infrastructure, so.
Yeah, so...
As opposed to saving the lagoon, we're repairing and replacing infrastructure.
But we're also helping the lagoon.
That's true. That's true. But if we don't repair and replace, we would be, we in theory are hurting the lagoon. I'm just turning that coin over. It may not be accurate, but I'm turning it over. But I don't, I don't see spending a lot of time on critiquing these because I think we do that when you get to come back with more information. That's all I'm saying. Let's assume that we have a stormwater utility and assume these projects for now and when we have more information, then we're going to have to make better decisions. I mean, if it was twenty dollars a month, I tell you, I'm not aboard. Yeah, so whatever.
It's, you're right. It's a budget that by definition you're going to have to amend one way or the other when you've made the decisions that, that you need to make, so.
I mean, there's some of these here, like the seventy-five thousand dollars for the study we've already committed to. So what are we going to do about it?
So you haven't, you haven't approved the study yet, so, but, but you will be, so...
Yeah, we will be.
It sounds like this whole thing is encapsulated on the premise that you're going to approve the stormwater utilities. I mean, it's, let's just encapsulate the thing and do the budget amendment when it gets approved.
Yeah.
It's really more of a conceptual holding place, if you will, for what your intentions are for next year, so.
When do you think that we would, we would be doing, approving it or disapproving it? Is that a September kind of thing, you're saying?
As far as generating revenue, I would anticipate that's six or eight months away. And that's the reason the timing is an issue.
No, but deciding on, deciding on the formula and how we're going to do it.
Four months?
Yeah.
After, because they've got a, they've got a cycle they have to go through after approval of calculating impervious area and looking at our billing system, et cetera. So I don't know. I forget what the timelines were on their scope of work.
Okay. But I mean, in terms of us approving this, when is it going to be presented to us in a way that we can approve, say yay or nay? At September?
No. That would be you approving the, the actual work authorization. For them to come back to you with something you can start to give the thumbs up or thumbs down to is the ninety to one hundred and twenty days. Once they start the work.
Okay, okay.
So they'll be to us on August nineteenth and then a hundred and twenty days from then, a city council, it'll be a different one, presumably will then have to make a decision.
First of the year.
Okay?
Yeah.
So I think what Jay's saying is that we encapsulate it and go on with life, knowing that it will be changed.
So do we have to put the study into this? Because that's going to be spent.
No, the study's got to be in the general fund because you've got to have that before you make the decision.
Well, again, I put the study in here because if you do eventually adopt a stormwater utility of any size, you can pay for the study out of it. However, if the study's in here and you decide not to go any further, then this would have to be a budget amendment that takes those costs out of here and puts it back into 304.
This could reimburse a city.
Well, I think you've got to have the study.
Sure.
You've got to have the groundwork.
Can you live with her accounting of it? In other words, she leaves it here, but if it goes south and there's a budget amendment that puts it back in?
Into 304.
Into 304.
In other words, it would have to be paid out of the general construction fund. You can do it the other way. You can put it in here and show a reimbursement to the general construction fund.
That works, but...
I mean, either way...
You haven't put the money into it if that, if that event happens.
Either way, it's going to be paid.
Well, the seventy-five thousand...
You voted on the item without budgeting, that's, without any budgeted funds. I mean, that's the problem.
It's part of the reason that at the bottom of the five-year plan, for instance, in 304, you don't see numbers that are incredibly small, particularly in the closer years, because we have to have flexibility. Things change and you, your priorities change. So again, I can take it out and put it over in 304 and then show a theoretical reimbursement either way, but...
I think we're committed to doing this thing, so, you know, let's go.
What do you, what do you think, Jay?
No, it was, you know, let's just keep, we're good to go.
Okay.
Okay, well, you see the projects...
You see the projects that we would be proposing and then this is where you take and put from.
Yeah.
But I don't know enough to know.
And some of the projects, the maintenance projects, about a hundred and forty, fifty thousand dollars are things that we have culverts that have failed. And so we need to do those in the next year. We patched them up as best we can right now, but they need to be replaced. So somewhere in that ballpark number, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have to do in this upcoming year.
Which is about what we did last year in twenty-seventh.
Something like that, yeah.
So if we didn't approve this, we got a hundred and fifty that's going to come in plus the...
Seventy-five.
Plus the seventy-five.
We have two twenty-five.
Whatever cost we negotiate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, because that seventy-five may be your first budget amendment, so. But, but yeah, and that's, again, I hate to harp on this, but that's the timing problem. I hear them saying they have to proceed, but what I'm saying is they can't proceed if there's no revenue. So if this revenue source isn't set, they can't proceed on everything you approved in 304 plus this because then there's nowhere for it to go back into.
Agreed.
And that's really the, the issue with this, so.
Maybe we'll sell the golf course.
That's possible.
Yeah, Dodger Town passed five of with the county commissions.
So we can sell it.
Go put the sale on, so.
Need an appraisal.
We have to have one council meeting in order to fill our obligation.
Well, the question is, is it better to sell or lease?
Sell.
Oh, lease.
No, lease. We don't want to be a landlord anymore.
We don't want to be a landlord.
Well, you know, the only reason I suggest lease is that we've got that, that debt looming on that thing. And if you can match the debt payments, then you don't have to go through all the financing.
Jay, people come in here wanting leases.
We'll get a dollar.
A dollar a year, yeah.
We'll get a dollar a year against our seven hundred thousand.
Those days are over.
We saw the signs go up at the post office.
Well, they weren't all over two city council meetings ago.
It's a sign of the times. I still don't have the postmaster's general signature, so.
All right, we won't, we won't, we'll drop that.
All right, well, you on to the electric fund, which will be entertaining.
I'm sure that'll go fast.
I can get it done.
Oh, come forward, Mr. Gory. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Do you want money to stay for this or?
What's that?
For your comments, do you want money to stay or?
I don't think so. This is, Peter Gory again. I'm just going to make some observations without comment and I've been away for months, so some of the data I put together and I haven't had a chance as I normally do to share everything with the staff, particularly with Cindy, to verify my numbers. So if I'm off, I stand corrected. But here goes. As I mentioned before, the total year-to-year change in total property taxes is one dot seven mil. One dot one mil is from total employee cost, another four hundred and fifty million is a transfer from the general fund.
Thousand.
Thousand.
A thousand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, may.
[laughter] That's it, now he's quick to overhangs.
Which is twenty-six percent of the increase is taking money from reserves and replacing it from the general fund. So that's the three components. Increase in property values, one dot one million in personnel costs and four hundred and fifty thousand, which is circular to replace money taken out of the reserve fund. Now, reserve funds, when our new team came in, the reserve funds were seven dot eight million dollars in the general fund. Seven dot eight million. At that time, the debt was twelve dot eight million. What has happened? It went from seven dot eight million in reserves to nine dot six million in reserves. At the same time, the capital improvement revenue notes went from twelve dot seven nine million to nine dot one million, just perspective. Now, I want to go to page three of the capital program. And without comment, if I understand correctly, there is a six dot seven million dollar total capital program. Of that, two dot eight million is going to come from other than the grants of three million dollars from the airport. So of that, two dot eight million, eight hundred and forty thousand is going to be from debt and the remaining two parts are one dot five five million, transfer from three eleven.
Three eleven.
And the aforementioned four hundred and fifty thousand.
Got it right this time?
From, essentially from the general reserve to the general fund, back into the reserve. So I just wanted to make those comments as observations as opposed to just a perspective.
That's, I mean, that's something that Peter and I have kind of been kicking back and forth, but I'll probably want to bring that back later on and that is a discussion as a hive, how high we want the reserves. It's pretty obvious that budgeting is not a perfect science. I know when Polaris and I first started, we had reserves of seven point eight. Now we're at nine point six and I can assure you that neither one of us budgeted for one point six or one point seven million to be pushed aside, you know, and euthanized. So the question becomes, you know, what, what is the appropriate level? And if there's any leftover from the previous years, can that be applied to one-time events like, you know, capital spending or something like that? But it's something that we've got to probably talk about. I think it would probably alleviate a lot of the capital budget problems and in some respects, perhaps that is a summation of the under-budget budgeting that we've done in the past several years. But I'm going to probably bring that back around a little bit later on after we get, get more into this.
But, but we are not in this particular budget year budgeting to utilize any reserves. I want that to be clear. The four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's going from the general fund into the capital projects fund is, for the first time, an actual transfer of, of revenue from the general fund into the capital projects fund. There is no part of this budget that's coming into or going out of reserves. I just want, want that to be clear.
How does, how does reserves increase? Is it because we have a surplus?
It increases when your adopted budget comes in, when your actuals come in better, lower.
It's not a non-cash thing. There's no, we don't have...
No. You budget for, you budget for revenues and expenditures. And by the end of the, of the year in question, revenues are different than you budgeted and expenditures are different than you budgeted. That's just a natural course of events. If, if you come out better on revenues and lower on expenditures, your reserves go up a little bit. Right now, your reserve's at nine point four million dollars, so it's up a million or so. The first year that, that Mr. O'Connor and I came on board, you actually were headed for an eight hundred thousand dollar decrease in your reserves at the end of the fiscal year. I think it ended up actually being about six hundred grand. So there were a number of years where the budgetary controls that were in place actually led you to diminishing reserves. And so we've built that back up a little over the last couple of years, but I know Vice Mayor Kramer and I have talked about this. You don't have any sort of a fund balance policy, you know, and so in some places there is, you know, there are written policies as to what levels you deem acceptable and how you manage it after it gets higher than that. I don't think, certainly not me, and I'm sure the city manager would never, never encourage you to budget any kind of recurring expenditures out of reserves. I've seen that done to, to very bad consequences in other places. But certainly if you said, hey, you know, we want to, reserves reach a certain, certain level, we want to set aside X amount for some one-time thing, that's, that's another conversation.
But there are no other sort of non-cash things that, that affect that, like a reserve that's, or something like that?
If you look at the reserves, I mean, it's nine point six, but only nine point four of it is, is actual reserves. There are non-spendable reserves on your balance sheet such as inventory. You can't spend inventory even though it's part of your fund balance, if that's the answer.
But we don't have a thing like depreciation or, I mean, or anything like that.
Not in your actual cash. That's the cash balance of your reserves in the general fund, yeah.
What level do you think is a healthy level to keep our reserves at?
Well, you know, if, if we do have this conversation, there are GFOA recommended best practices. You know, they consider a minimum, a minimum to be three or four months because that level of reserves you actually need in the first two or three months of the year when you have no tax revenue flowing in. Remember, you, you don't have a, like, an even prorata inflow of revenue. So you need three or four months just to have cash on hand to pay your bills for the first three months of the year. Then from that starting point, they recommend that you look at your mitigating circumstances where you are, our biggest one being hurricanes. You think nine million in reserves is a lot. That's gone the minute you have another hurricane and we just had our conversation about FEMA and how forthcoming they are with money. So, so that's a factor. Plus any other, you know, potential downturns in revenue. Again, you, you budget for a couple of million dollars a year in sales tax revenue. What happens if something really bad happens to the state of Florida? Tourism cuts off and that revenue doesn't come in. So that, that is a cushion against downturns in the economy or other unforeseen circumstances that could decimate your revenues in any given year. So it really depends on, you know, your control over your revenue sources, how much you're dependent on other things, things like hurricanes and other, you know, possible natural disasters as well as your need for cash flow in the first three or four months of the year.
And when you were talking about three or four months, it's in relationship to the twenty-one million dollars we spend or twenty million dollars we spend?
In relation to the, yeah, it's about the twenty million dollars that you spend.
I think we're a little over five months right now.
Which is not, given that three is a minimum and you're in a hurricane-prone area, not, not excessively bad. You know...
That is a good number, that three to five, isn't it? I mean...
Well, keep in mind the last hurricane, I mean, when we went from two thousand three, two thousand four, I mean, that was one point three million that got burned up in the reserves. I mean, a lot of this stuff, you know, maybe we just need to take time and have a presentation on it where you can actually just see throughout time and notate the events that happened and see how this all plays out.
I put, oh, sorry, I put a five-year history together at one point and you did have a pretty serious dip down and I think you're probably right about it being the hurricane a pretty serious dip down, and I think you're probably right about it being the hurricane timeframe.
And I think, I think it's a really good conversation, too, to have, what do we think is a strong, robust, healthy amount of time? Like, we don't want to be just the three months. What, where do we want to be? And then if, once we hit that mark, what would we do with anything above that?
I think there's a bond rating component to that as well, isn't there?
There is, absolutely, absolutely.
Fitch must really take it into consideration.
Fitch looks at that. You know, certainly, they look at it more in our electric utility. Right now, the only bonds that we have rated by Fitch and Moody's are electric utility bonds, so they're more concerned with the operating cash reserves in electric. But for instance, when we go to borrow money for the bridge project, I mean, our financial health and status, it has a, you know, it has a bearing. Also, remember, we're required every year in the conduct of our audit to do an analysis of our financial stability and our, you know, financial operating condition for the auditor general of the state of Florida. And again, that fund balance is a huge part of those calculations and those ratios. So it's a conversation worth having. You know, in the last couple of years, too, we have budgeted for, again, keeping in mind that 75 percent of the expenditures in the general fund are staffing and staffing-related, okay? We've budgeted for approved staffing levels, and we've had lots and lots of turnover. And frequently, that turnover leads to a period of time where that position's not filled. So that has risen, our reserves have risen in the last couple of years, primarily because of less in personnel costs than we budgeted because of those periods of time where we have had turnover. If you approved a staffing amount, and we had that staffing amount for the entire year, you really wouldn't see much in the way of under-budget conditions. So that's another thing to keep in mind.
The other thing, just as a caution, the first time you start dipping into reserves, there's a slippery slope there that we just need to be aware of. And then if we can live with 7 million, maybe we can live with 5 million. And if we can live with 5, maybe 3 million. So it becomes a handy tool to make projects that are maybe not necessarily valuable enough to get in your actual budget.
Of course, you turn that around, you go from 9 to 11.
Well, sooner or later, somebody's going to see it, and they're going to do something with it. Well, it might be good just to set a policy, a good fiscal policy, and just say, hey, these are the levels where it needs to be.
And maybe we ought to include the finance commission in that discussion.
It'd be a good idea.
I think the idea of aiming towards something, some financial goals, so that it helps our bond rating, or, you know, I'm sure you've got some goals about how you'd like to see this thing run. And, you know, just get those into cement somehow. That'd be great.
Should we talk about electric?
It's a good conversation, really.
Better electric.
Jim, will you drive us through this? There are so many pages.
Well, I think that I'll rely on the folks that helped put this thing together. Ted obviously is the driver of a lot of the numbers and has worked with Cindy on the projections and to make sure that the numbers all coordinate. But Cindy, maybe you can head off.
Sure. We'll start on the revenue page. As we talked about a couple of times briefly, this side of it, and as much as possible, the rest of the budget, aside from what Ted has put together and what Janet has put together, reflects the base case scenario provided to us by PRMG. Keep in mind, and it's the same every year, we have to adopt a budget for this electric utility, but our rate-making is predicated on what really happens to us quarter to quarter. So this base case from PRMG that they presented to you says that we can hold rates level right now and for the next year at the status quo of our current purchase power contracts, et cetera. So these revenues, particularly the big ones, the residential, commercial, industrial sales and the outdoor lighting, as well as some of the smaller customer fees, are based on that base case scenario by PRMG with rates at the current level. The other piece of this that we got from the base case scenario provided by PRMG and also Bill Harrington is the estimated costs for fuel and purchased power, which are based on the last spreadsheets that Bill Harrington put together in conjunction with Mr. Wright, talking again about the status quo, if you will. You know, debt service is what it is, and we've already talked about the transfer. So the other pieces of the puzzle are actually the operating expenditures that Ted has gone through and that Janet has put together.
There's one revenue item that, I just, outdoor lighting, the revenue went up $104,000. That was the only thing I saw in revenue that...
And again, I'm relying on and feel comfortable with the numbers that PRMG put together based on our current rates and customer growth projections, et cetera. So that is straight up their number and not mine.
It's not running at the current rate. I don't know that it's in a $95 million or $92 million budget, $100,000 is not much of a number. But anyway, it is up $104,000. And I don't know why it would change particularly.
Again, my numbers from last year were nice and round, as you see them, and they were, I took my rate sufficiency and I rounded it up to a nice round number. PRMG, and I can show you their backup, actually went through customer counts, real rates, dollars, you know, that whole thing, and put together a real rate study analysis. So I would hate to compare their more sophisticated analysis to my nice round number from last year. That's the difference right there.
It worked well.
Cindy, that may increase because, you know, if we had some lights for the county that came in.
Again, it's based on the actual customer data I provided PRMG. So I can show you their backup, but that's...
No, I said, you know, it's a very small number in relationship to the entire revenue. Go ahead, Peter.
Just one quick observation. Look at commercial sales, whereas every other entity is going up, there is going to be a $2,700,000 drop in commercial sales. I'm sorry, intuitively, I don't understand that, just as a point.
And again, let me go back to the 14, 15 numbers, and maybe this will help. At the time we put this budget together last year in 14, 15, I had my rate sufficiency analysis, which PRMG has told you since, that I was doing a pretty good job of balancing to the total revenues, total expenditures as a whole, but that maybe the rates among the various classes were not necessarily where they needed to be. And so those numbers for 14, 15, I guess I'd have to say, again, I'd hate for you to compare the very good rates, you know, rate analysis that PRMG put together to a very high-level, good enough in total rate number that I put together last year, that also, at that time, was predicated on much, much higher purchase power costs than ended up happening. Essentially, the 14, 15 budget, we did before we knew almost anything. So we put a budget together, and then low and behold, first quarter of 14, 15, if you take up that first quarter rate sufficiency, in terms of the purchase power costs and the customer revenues, it bears almost no resemblance to the 14, 15 adopted budget.
So what you're saying is the numbers are the numbers, which I can live with.
I'd say you'd almost be better off comparing the 15, 16 budget to the 13, 14 actuals.
Well, let me, let me build on...
That's a better apples than apples.
Let me build on what you just said. What we did for 14, 15, we're indeed doing again. In other words, the assumption we're making here is that we don't, there's nothing built in here for a reduction in cost from OUC or for efficiency coming out of the efficiency study. And so we're doing the same thing. In other words, the numbers are going to change.
Right. We adopt a budget because we have to, with best we know right now.
I'm just saying for the record.
But, no, 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 I'm agreeing with you in that our rate-making, okay, our rate-making is pretty much never predicated on the adopted budget. It's adopted on what, it's based on what really happens to us each quarter in actual costs in the electric utility. So as we implement some of these rate, you know, lowering initiatives, then we'll see that effect in the next quarter, and your rate-making will be predicated on that, on continued updates from PRMG and on whatever happens with OUC.
And natural gas and all the rest of it. But the $91,613 total electric revenue, I won't name any number because I think that's dangerous, so the press is watching, but that number's going to go down. If it doesn't go down, we're due to, because we've committed to drive the rates down.
Where are we with our electric optimization? Getting recommendations and getting some potential cost savings?
Actually, we're working on phase two right now, and I should probably hopefully get that next month. Now, phase...
I guess I haven't, I never saw phase one, so could you fill me in on what the phase one is if you were on phase two?
Phase one was determination, what you wanted to do with the plant. And did you get that, Cindy?
I saw part of it.
Okay. And it was supposed to be forwarded on?
I...
Okay.
Could we get that, yeah, at least distributed to council, please? And then, yeah, in phase two, you said, where are we?
Probably a month away on phase two.
And phase two is going into what?
Oh, like pole attachments?
Into the distribution details to try to get...
Yeah, transmission, distribution metering and all that, correct.
Whether we can do better or not.
Right.
I have yet to see any estimate of any cost to shut down the power plant.
That is all in phase one, and I'll get that to you. I thought that was passed on to you.
No, I haven't seen anything as far as that goes.
Well, it was sent to Tom, so I don't know if that's kind of where it was dropping. I'll make sure you get it.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Are we assuming that we're going ahead with the utility plant? Is this budget based on us still operating it?
Yes.
I think the answer to that question is yes, because when you look at the capital expenditures, you're spending money left and right in future years.
Until we have approval, we've got to. You have to assume that we're running it until...
Again, when PRMG came in conjunction with Chef and Bill Harrington, they showed you what they called the base case scenario. You're operating the plant, you have to because of your current contracts, you know, rates can stay the same, et cetera. That is what this budget is based on, because that's all we have on the table right now. But as the mayor points out, as each of these things we're attempting to do unfold, all of these numbers should start going down. But we have to start from where we actually are.
So if we had relative to the half of the power we get from OUC, if we had a different arrangement with somebody, them or somebody, in effect, that would change all the numbers.
Well, I'm just thinking software. Why are we paying $306,000 or increasing software? Paying $528,000 for new software maintenance?
Actually, that's one where, just so you know, there, we, I think we did double, they put it in the capital and we also had it in the operating, so that software number will go down a little bit. But again, we won't actually do anything, and Ted can speak to this, that we don't have to do as we move forward with these, with the various things. But if, for some reason, a year went by, and I'm not saying this, without any resolution with OUC, with that, et cetera, this is what we're doing right now. This is what's on the ground right now, I guess is the best way of putting it.
Yeah, because until you have some kind of a timeframe in which to evaluate, yeah, is it worth doing it for, you know, 12 months, two years? Yeah, you really can't decide. You've got to assume.
You know, it comes down to the inherent difference, if I could, between what we're talking about now, enterprise funds, and the general fund. In the general fund, you have to be much more exacting with your budget, because the primary revenue source is something you get one chance a year.
Right.
To decide on. With an enterprise fund, a lot of places don't go through a budget adoption process, but you adopt a budget because you have to, but you can change your revenue source at any point to match whatever your expenses and needs are, good or bad. And so, again, our budgets have rarely had that much to do with our actual rate setting. If you'd have looked at last year's budget just straight up, it would have indicated a rate increase. Well, that's not what we did. You know, as soon as we got good data on purchased power, we started doing our quarterly, you know, rate reviews, and we were able to hold the line. So it's a starting point, but it doesn't predicate what's going to happen with your rates next year.
Cindy, let me suggest this, and you tell me whether I'm right or wrong. Sometime in the autumn or early winter, we're going to have to reconvene, or somebody's going to, whoever's on city council is going to have to reconvene and redo the entire electric budget, if anything changes, and we're pretty sure it will.
No, what you'll actually have to do is approve a rate study and change the rates. You don't have to redo the budget, but simply move forward and do what you're doing.
You're not going to, I'll take oil, you're, that's another question, why are we buying oil? But you're not going to be buying oil for $374,000 if you don't have a plant.
Correct, but you don't have to revise the budget, because if you lower rates, if you lower rates, you don't have to revise the budget to lower revenues. Revenues will come in lower. My point is, as an enterprise fund, the real action that you take constantly is your rates and your contractual arrangements.
Why wouldn't we want to overhaul the whole, the entire budget?
Because it would be a lot of work for no real return. You know, it doesn't mean, if you lower rates, you'll take in less revenue, no matter what you do to the budget. If you want to, we can. But I'm saying, your control over your enterprise funds is completely different than the general fund.
If you get NERC compliance, that will change.
Possibly.
Possibly.
No.
If we lose the power plant plus the 138.
Correct.
And that's predicated on the idea that all this is going to happen in a year.
All I'm suggesting is, I'm really uncomfortable when stuff happens, when enough stuff happens that we don't...
Thank the Lord.
You know, I kind of take, I kind of take this position also, because in terms of you managing the funds that come in on the expenditure on the electric area, if we're not going to operate it anymore, all of a sudden, we don't need to spend that much money. And you want to be able to make sure that it goes in the right places. And so shouldn't we have an adjusted budget somehow?
Again, we can, but keep in mind, the vast majority of the money, let's look at page 115. $60 million out of 91 is, I'm going to pay the bills that are presented to me from those contractual arrangements and based on whatever contracts you approve. Of the $19 million, five of it's the transfer to the general fund, down in non-departmental. $6 million is the debt service. No matter what happens with the rates, I'm going to be paying those. And so what you're left with is a very small amount of this budget that is actually budgeted by you. And so, again, we can revise that part if you'd like, but essentially, if you close the plant, you're telling Ted and the city manager you want to close the plant and get rid of those staff.
I'm still hung on it, because there are things in the 59 million, like the NERC compliance and overtime and so on.
I'm talking about, the 59 million is purely OUC and FMPA.
Well, the enterprise fund is...
Just the bills that I pay monthly to the purchase power providers. But again...
The enterprise fund is event-driven. When the event happens, it'll change.
It changes.
I understand that.
A budget amendment via lag behind the change. But if you'd like to do budget amendments throughout the year as things change, we can certainly do that.
No, not one time.
You can't do that.
When we get suitable mass, when we think we have something.
When we sign a contract with somebody.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and with that being said, just keep that in mind. Once we get the new purchase power agreement in place and we do our transmission study, we'll kind of know where we are with closing the plant at that time.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. I mean, it's big money. I mean, you know, $21 million budget, and I guess I've made my point, but, you know, $5 million transmission, distribution, customer service, I mean, they're relatively big numbers compared to what we're responsible for. That's all, that's all I'm saying. Okay, peace. What Ted said, I can live with.
Yeah. As soon as we get an idea on that.
As soon as we get an idea on timeframe, when that, Lee, I'll let you know.
Do you want to, I kind of like to go through the expenditures by object, just for the fun of it.
Would you like to go through by departments or?
No, no, not particularly.
We've got both department heads here.
And he can pull it back to the department, if you want to do it by apartment. But like overtime salaries are, I'm not really concerned about that one.
Tell me what page on?
I'm on page 116.
116.
This is one of those where we have so many budgets for so many departments.
Fewer than the general fund.
Yes.
Yeah.
Forget the overtime, I don't really care about that, it's nickels and dimes. But the NERC compliance, tell me what will happen there and what events could trigger a change in that. That, I'm not trying to change the number.
Well, right now, it's currently 400 grand, okay?
Right, right, okay.
Give an example, next year, I would have to budget 1.2 million because of the NERC, the SIP compliance that we have to be in compliance with. Now, if I can get out of the 138, which I'm filing for the exclusion to get out of the 138, a lot of that we won't apply to the BES system.
138 being what?
138 KV tie line. It's a transmission. And we have indications that somebody would like to buy it.
This is the line that comes down the same kind of water main?
Goes from Emerson to 20.
Right.
And then from there to sub eight. And also tie at sub seven.
So what would we do, lease space on it, or what?
It's kind of in discussion right now. I'm not sure how we're going to do it.
Okay, time out. I'll let you go.
There have been transmission deals done across the state of Florida recently. And so those, for us to own the 138 is impractical. We don't really have it. The 69 is very important to us, it's the backbone of our system, but the 138 really is not. And we have some joint ownership, for example, with Fort Pierce and some of our 138s. So we are in communications with Fort Pierce and looking at ways, if we can get the 138 and the power plant closed, then that helps us really resolve a lot of big issues.
Okay, then the general insurance on boiler, if we get the plant closed, we won't need that, right?
That's correct.
Your software maintenance you have going up from 221 to 528.
That 200, there's 290,000 of it that's in two places, so that'll come out of here.
Okay, what are the two places, Cindy?
It's actually in the capital fund.
It's in what?
In the capital fund, in 405. It's on page, that was just a miscommunication between Ted and I.
Back up a little, back to professional services.
Absolutely.
And I guess I'm concerned on, yeah, what our legal bills have been on the electrical side, and here we're, we are budgeting 711,000?
We spent 500 and something.
Yeah, to date. Yeah, to date.
502, or I think 502 or something.
What page on, Ms. Turner?
I'm on page 116, Ted, uh, professional services.
Through month and May, we've spent 358,000, we had 500,000 budgeted. So, you know, through month and May, we're kind of right on our, of the current year, we're right on our $500,000 budget now.
But wait a minute, the new head, John Frost, doing things, and I saw another bill that came through from, yeah.
The total of the bill that we saw was 502.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, about a week ago.
I haven't received that one for payment at this point, have you seen a $500,000 bill?
No, 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 it's not, it one bill.
No, it's just summary.
Oh, it's the total of the year.
It was just a total.
Again, I'm saying that, that $360,000 year-to-date includes some of them. So, right now...
The 500 includes 360.
Yeah, so right now, you're at, you're right on a $500,000 pace, and we increased that sum for next year. You know, I, I don't know, I mean, we've had this conversation, three budget, you're, I budgeted a million, and everyone said it was too much, so we made it 500, and everyone said that was too low, so we went back to a million, but I, it could be...
I realize, yeah, that nobody's telling, I just think it was important, yeah, for the...
Yeah, yeah.
To bring that up, then, that we're budgeting some.
But it might be worth putting more into it, given what we're up against right now.
I could put more into it, frankly.
Whatever you'd like to do, I mean, I can make...
We've got all sorts of things going.
Yeah.
I know, we just got a letter that another one's going to start.
It'd be nice to have some results.
Of course, don't get results.
You think a million, you think a million would be the number?
900, a million, 850, something more than it is.
We'll say a million.
Can I do that, not go negative, let me just make sure that's cool.
I don't know, I'm always the meat in the middle person, we go 750.
Yeah, Cindy said she could do it.
We've got 800 and some thousand of, now we got 290 a month, yeah, we can do that, get a million.
What other ones do you have?
Does the optimization study, that comes out of the professional services too, doesn't it, Ted?
Mostly in current year.
Yeah, I mean, in current year, but I mean, that kind of type of thing would come from there.
Yes, ma'am.
The oil is down on the bottom of page 117, what, what are we budgeting oil for even with the current plan? Are we trying to get rid of oil?
I thought we did.
The number's straight from Bill Harrington, so...
Just because he's smarter than us, it means he's right.
Ted, we, Ted, yeah, we had that conversation, didn't we, Ted?
Yes.
Okay. The answer is?
What'd you say?
This is like television, you're on television, Ted.
Budgeting it if we needed it. You know, if we actually had to consume oil, if we had a hurricane and we had to burn oil, we would consume it, and then we'd have to put...
Take it out and put it in professional fees.
The irony is, is this is...
You got a quarter tank, you got a quarter tank of oil as it is, I think.
But, but when we burn it, it goes into expenditures, because right now, it's sitting in inventory. It comes out of the balance sheet, an inventory goes into expenditures. When we burn what's in the tank, it creates an expense, so you can't zero it out completely. I mean, if you burn what's in the tank, it gets booked as an expense out of the inventory, so...
It's not cash.
No, it's, it becomes an expense in the budget out of the inventory.
So Jim, what are you going to do?
I know, but this, it's still going to happen.
Don't argue with the numbers, Lee. You'll never win.
We'll take 100,000 and leave that as part of the line item. Your guess is as good as ours.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, okay, at least I understand.
Hold, hold on before you go further, as far as compliance, are we okay with that? If we go...
We mentioned that, but if we burn, then we'll have to worry about...
Yeah, we'll have to spend.
Four cents on the rate.
Anything else on those pages?
No, in fact, on 118, I've got a question on the Stanton 1 and 2. Do we know what the megawatt hour costs are for what was used to come up with these numbers?
Again, and this was the, the spreadsheet that Bill Harrington provided on the status quo version that he briefed you guys on.
So this is not based on the updated information from OUC, it is strictly status quo.
Most recent information that I had.
It would be our annual average than what we're paying?
83, 83.20?
For Stanton?
For Stanton 1 and 2.
Oh, no, that's, yeah, Stanton 1 and 2 and St. Lucie.
Break them out?
It does, it breaks them out, Stanton 1 and 2, OUC. No, it doesn't break them out, they're all lumped together just under FMPA contracts. That's, that's the lowest level of detail that I have from what he provided.
And then, OUC is at 70.96.
And again, I, I believe this spreadsheet was actually in the... I believe this spreadsheet was actually in the data that was provided to you on that agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that one. I just wonder if it'd have been broken out by, you know, by FMPA projects, if not.
It was broken up, I broke it out by project, because the number that Tom Richards provided me before he left, in total, for all the FMPA projects, matched the total number that Bill Harrington had, and so I used Tom's breakout to match Bill Harrington's total.
Yeah, that's just...
As good as I could get.
I don't believe any of these numbers, so let's keep going.
How many, how many megawatt hours does that say that we're going to, is it 745, 740?
304 from the FMPA projects, it was a total of 7, 77?
777.
No, never mind, that's, that's his little present value thing, that's way too much. Here, I'm just going to hand you this spreadsheet, uh, 717.
I remember 726, that wasn't far off.
717, 658.
Excellent, with that, what we generate.
That's the retail sales, that's not with the loss in it, that's the retail, after the, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
And that tracks really well with our three-year history and the revenue, sales projection for next year.
Right, thank you.
It doesn't matter, you calculate on what you bought, what you bought it at, what you paid.
Mm-hmm, exactly. You want to, you want to look at this?
No, that's fine, I just...
Thinking it's worth noting for the public, I guess that our, yeah, transfer to general funds down to 140,000, but that's strictly based on the fact that the revenue is down.
It actually went down the other 60, too.
And another 60.
200.
And that's because you're removing another 60 from it.
Yeah.
As of yesterday.
As of yesterday morning.
So it, it's 5440. That was an immediate compromise.
We're adding an extra billion to R and R, I know we, we've been kind of limping along in R and R, I was going to say, I don't know if that, how...
Yes, we have, I mean, I do have some projects that are, really need to be done, I can't keep waiting on them.
Also, subscription and membership, it's not important, but it just, you know, it went from 5 to 71 for what it's worth, that's the only other one.
Babe, Cindy and I had this discussion last week, what you need to do, we're going to back 30,000 out of that, okay?
Okay, let's go, we'll go on. If you and Cindy say that's right, I'm happy.
Cindy, that's what we discussed last week.
He had some other changes.
There was 10 per division that's going to be backed out of it, that's fine, okay.
What else is in there?
That's for a membership for APPA.
APPA is...
American Public Power Association.
Yeah, that's 30 grand?
It's 29 a year.
29 a year?
Correct.
Okay, I'm still looking, am I taking out 30, so we still have another 15 in there?
What, what we're going to do is spread it across all four divisions, between power plant, meter shop, TND. So there'll be four divisions, so you split that number.
So what other subscriptions do you have, or do other entities, like you bought, that are membership?
Right, there, there's some of that, and then some at the plant for the EPA's membership.
Are we still doing the mutual aid with FM, with FPL?
Mutual aid right now is through EMFTEC and FRCC, that's who our mutual aid is currently at this time.
Great.
Who's FRCC?
Board of Reliability Coordinating Council.
Good question, Ted. If we have a hurricane, how good will it be compared to 2004, which is pretty good?
Be just as good.
Thank you for the answer.
What is Fund 405, sorry for my ignorance, should remember.
Uh, Fund 405 is actually, if you flip over here to page 138, that's the true, like, ongoing R and R at the plant. I mean, like, just real low-level annual maintenance and repairs. You can see the categories there.
Yeah, that's the kind of day-to-day without doing any, yeah, other investments, okay, thank you.
Are we ready to go on to capital, or, you know, I'm sure there are other questions, I don't have any.
Yeah, I guess I'm just going to go back through major goals and challenges under power resources. I guess I'd still like to see something on cost-saving and efficiency, and, you know, any planned preparation for shutdown or, of that facility.
Okay, I can address that. But out of respect to Tom, this, Tom made this up before he left, so I didn't want to...
You're in charge.
I kind of got cost savings and, yeah, cost savings and improved efficiencies, I'm going to kind of say all the way across the board on things. Computer billing project, I think Cindy gave us an updated customer service on that one earlier. Progress to date on the TND for the implementation of the LED lighting program, on page 126.
Just, this is on the LED lights you were asking about, have we done some testing? And the answer is yes, we've installed 30 lights. We anticipate there'll be a savings of about $74.25 per light per year. So we'll be doing some installations around the parks and city facilities.
I agree.
That, that location right there is Royal Palm Point, where we started a pilot project, yes.
We did the pilot, so you could kind of look at the quality of the lights, too.
So it was the streetlights all the way down Royal Palm Point from like, uh...
From the boulevard all the way down.
From the boulevard down, okay.
And the payback somewhere in the neighborhood of nine and a half miles.
I just redid my house, kind of remarkable change, not just in savings, but the light's much better.
Absolutely. I, I mean, if we were to do all 140 lights, after you pay back, your cost savings, 10,000 a year.
Yeah.
I think it's significant for us to look at facilities as well and all around, I mean, things that we can...
What did it cost you for can light, Randy?
I couldn't tell you, I didn't tell you, I hate to do this one cost.
But we are proceeding in that direction.
Notice our general fund administration charge is up 6.4%.
Partially more positions in the general fund, but in finance and in IT. Also, the primary thing is folding the risk management personnel and HR back into the general fund. Every enterprise fund enjoyed about a two- or three-year recess from putting money into the risk management fund, because we had a residual balance. And so, now we're back to them having to pay their, you know, their fair share of what it costs to administer risks, so...
I'm ready to get a capital request on 135, Mr. Mayor, unless anybody else has any other questions?
53.
We're on page 53, but it might be better just to go through each one, one by one.
I find this, just looking at 53, I find this a huge amount of defenses for capital, about to...
Well, you, you know, you take, you take the second, third, fourth and fifth items, you've got 300, $500,000 for, you know, Unit 2 and Unit 5, and so on through...
Randy, what was?
Essentially, you've got it broken into three categories. That first section is the power plant and power production. So that is really the parts of it that are kind of up, back and forth, depending on what we do with the power plant. The remainder of this is for things that are not going anywhere, your transmission and distribution system and your customer service components. So, so really, the, the portion of this that, you know, Ted can speak to, whether he's going to jump right out and do these as soon as the year turns over, or which of these might be held in abeyance until we decide what to do with the power plant under power production.
I mean, obviously, if it doesn't need to be done, and we can hold off and still operate, that, that's what we'll do.
Question, customer service lobby improvements, $15,000?
Yeah, we, if you go back to the, if you go back to the description, you know, first of all...
Getting a monitor, or TV monitor, or the customer service, that, the weights aren't long, and, I mean, customer service gets people through, I was going to say...
Okay, if, if you go back to the, this page where we describe it, it's actually a few things. It's not 15,000 for a monitor. Part of it is actually new chairs for our customer service personnel who are sitting in chairs that they sit in all day long, that are extremely old and broken down. It's a coat of paint, because I don't know when the last time you were in there was, but it's a pretty unpleasant, it's pretty unpleasant. Um, the TV is kind of like the one in the Sallyport for the police department, it's about a million years old, and our idea was that if we replace it with a flat-screen monitor, we could also use that monitor for customer service messages. You know, right now, we can't scroll anything, you know, adages, boil waters, you know, we're going to be close on muddy, that kind of thing. So our idea was that we could use it for, you know, educational purposes as well for customers, because there are weights in there. You know, it's actually not, any individual piece of that is not a lot of money, but I will tell you, having, you know, spent some time in other places that I think do customer service extremely well, like the, like the tax collector's office, you know, I mean, there's just a certain flow to that environment that keeps customers well-served and happy and pleasant, and we've done a few very minor things down there, like putting up those velvet movie theater ropes. You have no idea what difference that made with people's demeanor and calmness in line, because they didn't feel like they were getting line-jumped at the cashier, okay? So, it, just little things like that, I, we think will enhance customer service, and out of a budget of five or six or eight million dollars, we just don't think it's that much. So it, we cannot do those things, but it would be a coat of paint, decent chairs, flat screen, the blinds are broken.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a bunch of things, so...
Otherwise, I'm good on, on electric capital programming, other questions?
Yeah, it looks like all the pages from 63...
It's most of it.
Through, well, and you've got them segregated through, well, 63, 3 through 79, have to do with the plant.
Ted's had a lot of challenges at that electrical area with coming from morale and turnover and not having a equipment or budget, I mean, and hey, just to keep, keeping that electric running, we really appreciate it, and just want you to know that.
Thank you, and I will tell you that morale has improved quite a bit in the last year or so.
That's good to hear.
I mean, because the guys are, you know, we're, we're starting to get the equipment that we need. We're doing the maintenance on the system, because they do, they care about the system.
And I know in an effort to try to keep rate low, they kept squeezing out your, yeah, your repair, capital budgets and your repairs, so let's get it working well, thank you.
Also, we need to introduce Ralph, because he's sort of taken over the hotbed at the power plant. Fortunately, he has many years, in excess of 20 years, with the city, so he knows the plant like the back of his hand, and knows a lot of the players down there, and has really teamed up with us in doing a good job, the plant.
I also have, in case you have questions about any of this, our customer service manager, Janet Roberts, Roberts is here in the front row, I don't know how many of you know Janet, but, you know, again, her group, and she and her group just do a tremendous job dealing with our 30,000 utility customers, and she's at the heart of some of the improvements we've talked about in terms of, you know, software improvements and, and more of a current century approach to giving our customers the ability to pay their bills and get their questions answered, so we're undertaking a lot of improvements down there, and so...
And a very good problem solver.
Boy, I tell you, and we previously authorized it, but a million eight in two years into the North Beach, you know, rebuilding the switchgear up there, I mean, we located it a long time ago, but whatever. Climate page says 85, I'm not questioning it, I'm just saying it's a lot of money.
This was actually budgeted last year?
I know, I remember.
And we just haven't completed it yet?
I know, I remember. I wasn't quibbling about that, I remember that. That's station number 11?
11 south, and sub 9 is up north.
That's the one that services the north.
The shores, yes.
That's a lot of money, a million eight, and overtime, 2 million eight to service that area, anyway.
That doesn't just service the area, that's the back...
No, I know, it, it gets Bethel Creek and...
It's really the, part of the backbone of the entire system, because that 69 loop is what keeps...
Yeah, because 10 has only got one transformer in it, and at the SunTrust.
The one thing that's really kind of not in here, because I don't think we know what to put in here, is what will happen if we do, you know, what kind of capital costs we will have associated with decommissioning the plant, so... So, you know, we may have a lot of these things go away, but in their place will be some number and we don't really know what that is at this point.
Yeah, you're going to have to closing the plant, then you have a switchgear problem, don't you? I mean.
You do, and for the immediate cost savings, what you want to do if you close the plant, just leave the building intact, you can leave all the gear and stuff inside, you know, and retain, retain your 69 ring bus right there. That'd be your immediate cost savings, so. But if you choose to take the building down, move all your gear outside, there's a cost associated with that.
Well, but the, and the gear inside the building is old too.
It is, it is.
I mean, we're going to face that at some point in time.
Yeah, what its useful life is left, we don't.
I mean, how old is the switchgear inside the building?
Forty plus years old, I'd say.
Yeah.
Maybe more than that. I mean, I've been here 35.
This is different than the transformers on the outside. This is the brains of the thing.
And ultimately, it's in conjunction.
I've seen electrical gear, believe me, I've been in a lot of old buildings, I've seen electrical gear that's almost 80, 80 to 100 years old and they still use it.
I'm not sure about the 80. And you're right, Jake, as long as it's protected and maintained.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of Edison Electric stuff and it's, when you see that, it's real old.
What, well, excuse me, Jake.
No worries.
What's, what looms, the plant's not running anymore, it's closed, what looms as immediate capital threats? Not in money, just in terms of what has to be done?
Any capital money spent, if the building stays, are you assuming the building's still there?
If the building stays, the plant is shut down. And forget the security and all that, but what capital do we face to run the system with the building there?
Not a whole lot if you leave the building there with everything intact inside.
Your cost is going to be your transmission, whatever that study tells us that they have to invest in.
We have no use for the two oil tanks on the outside.
No.
So they could be removed at some cost.
But, right, but your 69 ring bus would stay intact, your distribution would stay intact, so really not a whole lot of capital involved?
But the, I mean, we're talking something that could be done in multiple phases.
Correct.
So we could break it down to make it palatable.
We, if we didn't have the oil tanks and we didn't need the condensers or cooling on the river, you know, where there's quite a bit of, and we have no security need.
You'd have security.
Security because of your switchgear in there, yeah.
But the security need, fence could be pushed west or not.
Yeah, you could condense the area and do that, and then you could also, your security is not going to be at 24/7 type of thing. We just work out what kind of security to go by and check and make sure it's tight. But, yeah, I think you could condense the area that's going to be fenced.
Probably to half of it or something like that.
You'd probably go more than that, probably third, two-third, split the property.
I'm just, just thinking out loud.
We did pretty well when we had the tanks cleaned on the oil, in which they actually paid us and cleaned the tanks. If, you know, we were lucky enough to find a contractor for the oil, they'd remove the tanks, then that obviously would be a benefit to us.
Are the tanks usable?
They are, yes.
Because we used to move tanks of that size when I worked for Cargill, I mean, we, we had other places for them.
Is there any other talk about somebody using as an immersion plan? Has that ever come back around at all?
Only in just general conversation. I have not, just in general conversation, I haven't really seen or heard of anybody that, that it, Chef said he'd gotten a call one time from somebody, but we haven't seen any.
Do we face any issues with the gas line coming in with St. John's Water Management or anybody not running the plant? I mean, we can leave the gas line there?
That comes back to the Indian River Farms. David and I probably will have another meeting or two or three or four or multiple, because I'm sure that once it's not being used, it would be his preference that we abandon the line or remove it from his properties. Excuse me, Indian River Farms properties.
I think it's right, it's his property.
Well, I don't know if there's any talk, if there were, I remember a couple of people in the Utilities Commission were thinking about selling natural gas to homes. I don't know if that's still viable or not, but I don't know if that'll come back around or not.
I haven't talked to anyone about that. Obviously, you would have to build a distribution system to do that.
Water and sewer?
Well, I guess, thank you for staying with us.
Yeah, thanks for stepping up and taking care of everything.
No problem, thank you.
Maybe next time, be more painful.
We'll try, right?
But maybe next time we'll have a little.
Better picture of what's going on.
So, just to talk about the optimization study, how many copies you need?
Can you email it or not? If you'll send it, send it to Tammy.
I've already sent it, so I've got it ready.
You got it? Cool, all right, thanks.
She'll take it.
Tammy, oh. Will you include Jim on that as well?
Good point, good point.
Like to know we're all looking at, for sure.
Do we want to push on or we want to take five minutes?
Yep.
Yeah, let's get it done.
Thank you. Bye.
This is because Mr. Rob Bolton has all the information.
Yeah, but I'm just afraid where the conversation goes sometimes with Rob.
It'll go downhill.
It'll go downhill real quick, which is the way it should go. We're starting early, aren't we?
Okay, we're on.
Just trying to do it.
Remember, you got to give one to Tammy.
Page 140 or 141?
Ah, there you go. You want to start with what I handed to you. It's just a quick update of kind of where the status that we're in. If you look at the budget book also in there, you'll see under the goals and objectives, I tried to spell out what we did accomplish up through May when we prepared the sheets.
Thank you, it's a dramatic improvement from yours past, I appreciate it.
Our, well, up through May, you know, and now it is July, so what we did is we're kind of running a more current one now. If you go to the second page, it's kind of the staffing level. So if you go through it, a lot of things have been completed and we're pretty much done with the staffing level at the end of this budget cycle for 2014, 15. So the outsourcing laboratory was completed, dual certification, I have one employee that has roughly one month left of cross-training to reach his 2,080 hours. The automation of the plants, the membrane replacement project is currently under construction. They started yesterday and should be done.
Membrane replacement, are you running the reverse osmosis then or?
It's shut down for two weeks while we replace the membranes inside.
So you're using all?
All lime salt and water, yeah.
Okay.
And so, once that's online, then that should reduce pressures because those elements are roughly, I think they're almost 12 years old now, very, very old. The reverse osmosis plant, the plans are at 100% now. If you look at the original back in May, I said 90%, so they're at 100%. We have a little bit of tweaking to do and work through the front-end documents with purchasing and hopefully we'll be out to bid for October 1st. We did put in for a, a grant application in with St. John's for roughly a million dollars. I don't know how the funding will go and really they've delayed, I was hoping to know by now, but they've delayed twice now and they're trying to go through their budget to fund more projects because I guess there was a lot of people that put in requests this year compared to years past. So I think the new deadline is August 14th, so we'll know in August if we received any funding for that.
Has it been, has there been funding approved through the state? Not for your project specifically, but.
Well, I think that's part of the whole thing, was that whole state fiasco that went on and all the shuffling of the money around, and that's what delayed all this, and now there is money. And then I think also St. John's is saying that they have some money that they'd like to, in reserves or whatever, to put forward, like an extra five or six million dollars to fund some more projects. So it's going in front of their governing board and that's why the delay for this. We had received $292,000 grant for the step system, so we'll be drawing that down as we put the lines in. We requested another $250,000, so that, we put in for two projects. One was for the reverse osmosis plant expansion and the other was for the actual connections from the two-inch lines that we installed in the step system, the little one-inch lines in the valves and all that, service lines, we requested another $250,000 for that. So those are the two that we've applied for. It's a 33% match.
Reverse osmosis plant seems to be in the 5.5 range, totally?
I think it's, maybe when you add everything up, probably, yeah. If you add the new skids that are going to be installed and then you add in the de-gas of fire improvements or the odor control improvements, and then over time, the generator replacement and then the wells themselves, yeah, you're probably up to five and a half million dollars over five years or whatever we were looking at, yes. Waste water plant, the plant automation was reduced to strictly monitoring and regulatory reporting. So where we had budgeted in the past, we were going to look at a lot of automation there at that plant, we've cut that back. We, I've sat in, we've had two presentations from two different vendors, and then I talked to another vendor that had really the only TSS meter that meets regulatory compliance. The other vendors have to calculate a value and DEP doesn't regulate, recognize calculated values versus truly sampled values. So we're going to probably do a combination of both. One, utilize the vendor that has the meter that meets DEP's regular requirements for our reuse side, and then from the plant side, probably use a different vendor. So it's kind of delayed it a little, but there's some cost savings there and the major thing is, is the amount of cabling and conduit runs that we would have to do in the plant to make the second vendor's work work. So there's a higher cost, there would be a higher cost with programming, there would be a higher long-term cost with having to keep somebody to constantly update things versus one of the other vendors, it's kind of a, you run one cable and you just plug components in, and then you'd have two screen sources in the plant to be able to see the data, and then they're kind of always maintaining and upgrading and, or be able to come in and troubleshoot if you had to, so.
Sounds easier.
Yeah, it, it, there's good sides to one, there's good sides to the other, and so we're trying to blend the two together. Supervisory classification was done years ago, security system upgrades were finished last year. GIS, as of July, we have 81 of the 82 atlas sheets done. So we are finishing up the last one and then we will go back and pick up the data that we missed. We roughly think.
What does it do?
We had 82 atlas sheets, so years ago, somebody established atlas sheets and they were really about a quarter section. So they were maps. And, and they had odd numbers, but when you would ask anybody, oh, that's on sheet 34, that's on sheet, you know, everybody knew.
This is where all the pipes are.
This is where all the pipes are. So we started with now taking stuff that was on a map and instead of, originally, we started looking at, let's recreate the map, and then with all the technologies and GPS and now your smart tablets and all that, we decided it'll be quicker, it'll be much more accurate if we just go out with a GPS equipment and pick up, take the old map, send somebody out in advance, let them mark where all the meter locations are, where all the valve locations are, where the hydrants are, and let's go through and pick up all this data and map it so that when we pull up an aerial and that point comes in, you're looking right on top of it, right on the manhole or right on the hydrant or anything else. We've done that, however, as you go through that, all of a sudden, you got this old map and it says, well, there's a valve here, well, it's gone, something's wrong with it. So we didn't want to have to stop and, and dig up or find all those valves and everything else, so we just progressed all the way through it so that we could get the work done. Now we're going back and behind them and finding where the valve got buried or the, or something got removed, or it got asphalted over or something like that. And so the, so now they'll go back in through one more time and pick up all the remaining things that are out there. Also, when you get under tree canopies, the GPS doesn't work that good. So that's, in those cases, we're going down the center of the road and just kind of measuring and offsetting and picking up all the information that we can. So, but, you know, I have a feeling by this time next year, all of that stuff should be cleaned up and.
We know where everything is.
We know where everything is, and, and really, we're using it. I mean, we've gone live with the data and we have people using it on these tablets and, and really, the tablets have become the breakthrough in this industry that we have for water and sewer and electric and everything else because even yesterday, I was interviewing a guy as a heavy equipment operator and, and when it was all done and I was looking at selecting him because he was the best I thought for the job, I said, do you operate a computer? And he's like, well, yeah, you know, I do this, don't know Excel, everything else. I said, do you have a smartphone? And he goes, oh, yeah. I said, are you good? He says, oh, I can do anything on it. So this is just a big, bigger smartphone with a larger screen. So, so they're not intimidated by this. So, so anybody will pick this up and start working with it, and now we're starting to utilize and companies are starting to move into putting applications in here that are work order-driven and, and, you know, so that you don't have to have the computers or the heavy tablets or any of the other stuff. And this is $500, so if somebody breaks it, yeah, it's $500, but it's not $4,000 for a rugged tablet that you're lugging around and, and trying, I can replace these easily. So, anyway. So there we are, up to GIS, and then as of, as of this budget, we are down to 50 employees as we said we would in the optimization study. We did add back one more for Ted's group, so he, if you look at our budget, you'll see a transfer in of, of money to our budget because we do now all their electrical locating also. In the past, we had two locators in water and wastewater, there, Monty had a locator and Ted had one full-time locator and a part-time. So we've condensed down four and a half positions down to two. So there we are with that. Go back to the front sheet. Just a few things I want to bring out that you'll see in the budget, you might have picked up on already. Under operating, under 9,005, you'll see a huge increase in professional services and that's mainly to cover what we'd like to do as the next step with a company that we call N4, that has all of, in other words, for years, we've been computerized with a computer system that puts all of our maintenance in it, so our electrical panels, our gears, our plate history, all the stuff that's in, you know, vendors and part numbers and all that are in a system. We've been working with them and we want to expand that so that we have access to it through this tablet system. And what that does for us is, not only does it do, it helps us with the plants, but it also helps us out in the field, say, for instance, the step system where now I have an electrical panel at everybody's house and I have a pump at everybody's house and I have to know how many people are occupying that and which tank is in there and when I need to pump it out and all that information so I can get it all on a schedule, this will be able to do all that stuff. So if we get an alarm in the middle of the night, somebody can pull it up on the tablet without having to necessarily go out there and respond and go, oh, well, that's got an oversized tank and they should be fine till tomorrow, you know, but we'll go ahead and make sure somebody's there first thing in the morning, instead of that call-out that I'm constantly would have to start paying for. So that's where you'll see an increase in that professional services. Also, what I'd like to do is, and I don't know, have enough time, I'd like to get them started this year, so there's enough money, I think, in some accounts I have, but I don't started this year, so there's enough money, I think, in some accounts I have, but I don't know if I would expend that amount of money by October 1st, but we would go ahead and get that started and work through Cindy to, to get at least that, so we're not delayed for a couple of months. Under capital, I'd like to make one change, we have an excavator in there that we didn't, it was one of them last-minute items, and we did not add in for a trailer, which was $14,000, and then we were toying with the idea of adding a $10,000 jackhammer attachment, and I decided not to put it in, and just as soon as I not, decided not to put it in, we've had two opportunities where we would have really needed if, because we had a jackhammer out somebody's driveway, and it led to a longer period of time where the person had, you know, a leak under there and everything else, so we'd like to go ahead and add that Back again to the reverse osmosis plan, I think I went through there, we're at 100% Sledge processing facility. We approved the construction of it, however, right after, the vendor came back and asked that we do a little bit of change, because after their installation in Fort Pierce, right alongside the river, which is kind of where ours is going right alongside the river, they said, well, can we put it inside a building instead of in the portable container? Now, it's still portable because it's skid-mounted, it's just going to be inside a building. So instead of constructing a new building, we had a slab that an old building sat on right there out front.
Yeah, out front.
Yeah, as you drive it over to my office, you'll see that slab and everything that was there. So they're looking at the design of enclosing that back, that slab, and putting the equipment inside.
You were going to put it inside a maintenance building.
We were going to put it inside that little maintenance building, and that posed, the only problem I had with the whole project was that I was going to be using dumpsters, so the hauling costs, depending on the market, may be increased by moving it out to the spot that I'm talking about where the old building was, it was destroyed. I can put it in a trailer-mounted type system. They can load a trailer, you know, a 20 cubic yard trailer and haul it out every two days instead of a dumpster that would have to get emptied every day.
Having been to Fort Pierce, that, that is needed, really.
So we're in.
Of course, you're a lot farther from the water than Fort Pierce.
Fort Pierce was right on the water, but, but still. So, so we're in the process now, we're probably at about 90-something percent on the design end of that, and, and that change. That may or may not come back to council depending on what the increase in cost is. If it's small enough that Jim can sign off on it, we'll just go with that. If it's larger than that, we will.
When is this thing going to be running?
If, I'm hoping to have the design and everything and ready to do a change order for the thing in the next 30 days or so. So then you got about a six to nine-month construction window, probably. So it should be done by October 1 of next year, easily. Hopefully done by the time we're sitting here next year.
The good thing about visiting Fort Pierce, there were a couple other little things we were able to change too, like the sulfuric acid valve and some of those that are really more safety-oriented than anything else, so. That, that really helped us that we had a, a system down there to look at.
And it's still a great test, because it's a $240,000 year savings for us. So, I mean, we're moving forward for it, it's just we're looking at.
Make it right.
Make, make it right the first time coming, coming out.
The Fort Pierce thing is, it's really quite small, it's impressively small and compact.
Yeah.
And it's amazing what it replaces, it's just being a leak.
Yeah. And in fact, I, I, as part of the RO plant odor control system, I'm looking at a new product, it's called BioAir Solutions, and they've been in business since probably '06, and they have over 100 installations now. A lot of them, I was just in, on vacation up in New Jersey and visited a plant there, and the guy's like, why are you visiting a plant in New Jersey? Well, the difference was, it was on my way back to the airport versus happened to go to Jacksonville and drive three and a half hours one way to go visit something and drive all the way back. So that's why I stopped in and saw it. But, but the guy, I was glad I went there because he's probably one of the first that had it installed, so he's been operational now for over five years. And he says the best thing that he's had in his 32 years as, you know, going through different types of systems and, and the aggravation, and this one didn't work, and that one didn't work, and, and New Jersey has a lot tighter regulations than we do in the state of Florida because they have air quality requirements that they have to meet, or they're in violation of their permit where we don't have those. So, but, just as a thought in the future, you know, if this system works, then, then the sludge system, we're like, we can shut off our digesters, then really, the only odor that we need to control at that wastewater plant is right there at the headworks, and they have towers that you could put in right there, that probably pretty cost-effective that if you did some financial analysis, would probably say that, you know, replacing the media that's out there on those beds every five years or so, you know, it pays for itself just to put the tower in, and then you could repurpose all that land that's out on the waterfront too, if you're talking about.
And the energy and the fans.
And the energy and the fans and all the other stuff, and so, so, I mean, time will tell, I didn't put that into this budget, but that's just long-term thinking, that, and we don't know what, you know, what the wastewater plant will bring in the future. Anyway, moving on to step implementation, we've permitted Bethel Creek, we've permitted the Live Oak area, South Peach area, we have a draft permit in that I've made a few comments, and hopefully by the end of the week, that'll get released to us. So that puts us at about 721 of the 1,500 homes permitted for construction. Now, our construction is a lot slower than I anticipated, and mainly two reasons. One is I had an operator that hurt his back on the job, and that has really slowed us down in our installation. And then the other is, I didn't realize how many people really had problems with septic tanks, and, and the phone calls have been just coming in that we've been jumping all over the place where, you know, you normally would say, here's a pipe production, you would go up this street, well, I'm getting calls that, you know, my septic tank's failing, I need it, and, and it's in areas that are mainly all on the beachside that we're talking about. So we're jumping literally from kind of street to street to street and going in and running the line down to serve, you know, four or five homes along this street, and then you got new construction that the, the contractor doesn't want to pay for a septic system if he can just hook up to this thing and, and be done with it. So we're jumping around for all the new construction. So while I'd like to say we're really putting the lines in, we're serving the people, and we, we have a good response from, from everybody. We're, I'm still going out and giving presentations to people and homeowners and stuff, and that's all working out real well, and I really haven't had anybody that's against it, and there's, you know, with the sign-up and save program that we're talking about, a lot of people are really for that.
When are you going to get to Live Oak?
To Live Oak. I need to move over to Live Oak because there's a new house being constructed, and then I've had two calls as Live Oak turns into Indian River Boulevard, now I have two homes with failing septic tanks. So we'll probably come and get over to Live Oak in the next month or two and run all the way down around the corner and to the last house that we need to, and put a valve in, and then jump back where we've been talking.
How does that go to the McWilliams bathroom, I mean?
Uh, McWilliams bathroom is, there's a force main already out there, so that's an easy one to, to hook up.
So you're going to, is that a step system, or is that?
Yeah.
But you're close enough that it's a short line?
Yeah, it's probably about 30 feet off the back of those bathrooms, there's a force main already, so that's, that's an easy installation.
That was part of our grant application.
Why wouldn't you just do that on normal sewer? I mean.
It's a force main. So for them to do gravity, they'd have to go back to the lift station, it's all the way back by the dog park, by the, by the, yeah.
There you go.
I understand.
I think we did finish GIS. Future goals, we're open for discussion if there's anything that the council had off the top of their head that they wanted us to move forward with, we could talk about that now, we're in the future on it, and.
A few capital plans, I still would like to, yeah, say, okay, hey, at some point, we would all love to see the waste treatment plant off of the river.
You know, we had a.
Where do we can, you know, practically, economically do this is.
And I think the last year, we talked about it, and, and talking about it with the Utility Commission, was that 2021 number is still there. I mean, financially, you really can't do anything until that one bond is paid off. And, and, and even, what was it, last month, that Park Water was back in town, and the city manager and I, and Brian Cullen and Brian Saul sat down, and afterwards, I went and got coffee with Brian Cullen, and we were talking about the drought in California and everything, but one of the things that he was looking at, he's like, well, you know, operational, there might be some savings, and then when he looked at our operating numbers and where we got down and with this optimization, so there's really not that much money and savings from an operational standpoint. So it really, really drives back to that financial, when you can afford to do it. I'm sure there'll be some savings on the operation side, but not like you would really think, so. So we're still looking at that 2021 number, before you could really hard, take a hard look at it at that point and say, you know, let's move forward and not.
On page 143, environmental cleanup recovery, but we have two years in a row of a negative 200,000 expense, which is a good thing, I hope that carries forward. Just curious what it is.
That is the cleanup at the airport, so we.
The airport pays you for it.
Right, yes.
I understand that. The other thing that, that could be helpful to us here is, and when we are successful with the electric rates, you know, looking at your utilities, you use a million six, whatever percent we can get out of the utilities will flow to your bottom line.
Yeah, there's not a lot of water anymore, because we used to have a lot in the water side for reuse supplementation, but since we put that, you know, stormwater utility pump station in, we're really not using potable water unless things get really bad and, and we have to supplement with it. So a lot of it is electric, and like I said, I really don't toy with that number because I don't know.
No, well, we don't, we don't, we don't know either, but I think Peter figured out once that you use more than 50% of the power that the city consumes overall. It was 60 or something like that, 65. So, I mean, we'll get a positive on that, which will be useful.
Weren't there some ways where, weren't there some ways where maybe you could be not doing things at our peak hours or something like that? Weren't there some, some suggested?
Shifting.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the load shifting is something that we would look at, and we have been talking, well, when we were talking to U.C., we talked about doing some load shifting on those type of.
We did, we definitely did that when we had that, what was that thing where we were exiting their contract, and I forgot the terminology they used for it, but everybody was freezing to death for that winter while we were trying to get, make sure that our load was down low enough, and we ran our facilities and reduced a couple megawatts. The only problem that you run, and, and you're allowed to do that, you're just limited, you know, with, with the clean air requirements too, I'm, I'm allowed to operate for certain periods of time, so if I start getting into that load shifting and I start running those numbers up, then I'm polluting the air by running a generator, so therefore they frown upon that. So there's a couple little checks and balances that they have out there on that. I know in the past where, you know, like FPL offers different generation, or they offer different discounts and stuff for, for that, I don't think the city's structure is set up for that, and I don't know if the new structure is going to go to that or not.
Not there yet.
We do demand building on commercial, but.
We do demand building on him as well, but I think what he's talking about is where you would disconnect the load.
Right.
Sign up for.
Load shifting, yeah.
Could you be selling more reused water?
No, we're selling whatever we can produce.
Can you produce anymore?
And truthfully, truthfully, you don't make any money on reused water. You know, you collect 67 cents, and you're probably spending 45, you know, so it's not a huge moneymaker that, that's out there, and.
No, but there's a great demand from the public to want to expand, yeah, the reused water availability, because.
Because of price, and the problem that you have is that the, the areas that really want the water have the smallest pipes. So, so now, on top of that, if you were to say, you know, the shores wants more money, more water, I mean, they, they, to do that, you got to put a booster station, and now I'm pumping things twice. So, so, you know, I have an increased cost on now to produce water to them, I might be up at 55 or 60 cents just to collect 67 cents. So it's tough. And then, then what you do is, you, reuse is such a hard animal to control because when it rains, people don't want any of it, and then when it's a drought, they want more of it because it's cheap, and they want to run as much as they can out on their grass, you know? If you, if you're irrigating with potable water, you're, you're not going to turn it wide open, you're going to control how much water you use, but reuse, they're just saying, hey, well, I don't care, it's 67 cents a thousand, I'm going to run as much as I can. And now you've created these gigantic demands when there's no supply coming in.
Is the 67 fixed, or?
It's fixed, based on that, that's, yeah.
Yeah, we did that as part of what we did. You're still pumping water out of the main relief canal.
We are, we were yesterday afternoon, I know that.
What happens is when you run short on water, he takes it out of the main relief canal.
Yeah.
Also, just for the reuse, and there are a lot of customers that want it, but for example, the Catholic Church, when we went to them, they want it, but they want us to run the line to connect to them, and there's, they cannot justify paying for that because they have a well system. And a lot of, anybody that's on a well system, they, they're not real crazy about.
It doesn't pay to invest in consumer-minded customers.
There's some people that want it, I mean, I'm sure if people were watching, they'd be in here if they could get here quick enough to say, I want it, but, but.
Indian Bureau Isles.
Yeah, you know, but, but like I said, the more customers you sign up, the more problems we, we will have with it and balancing it. And, and like you said, back when we originally looked at the pricing of reclaimed water, the, yeah, it was 67 cents, but then it was supposed to go to 88 over a few years, and then the county turned around and withdrew those increases, so, so you're stuck, you know, and, and so.
Now, we can still raise our rates in the city if the council chose to do that.
Right, but, so, I mean, that's kind of where we are with the reusing.
I'm not willing to cross over that bridge again, it was painful enough for sure.
Jump to another item.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
147, gas and oil, yeah, small dollars, but it's up almost 90%.
Yeah, last year, when we, we had a tank that we replaced, it was a 10,000 gallon tank that we replaced with a 5,000 gallon tank. So when we drained the tank, we polished all the fuel and then filled all our generators and all our portable generators and all our other stuff because we had a surplus, so the number was a lot lower, and now the number's higher this year because now we're actually back to what a normal would be.
Makes sense, thank you.
I'll jump ahead, but we can come back. 167, painting of accelerator number three for building 240. I'm not really questioning, I just want to know what it is.
Uh, when you turn onto Airport Drive and you look to the right, you'll see the steel accelerator units, and that's the lime softening treatment units, and lime is very aggressive on steel, so the last time we painted them was right around the '04 hurricane, so you're pushing out 11 years.
Is it outside, inside, or both?
It's mainly the inside and probably the outside we'll paint also, but, but the main price cost problem is the inside, because, you know, you got rust that's got to be treated, and then lime that's got to be blasted off to get back to.
And epoxy or something.
Right, and, and then you're probably going to find that you got steel replacement here and there where it's pitted down to a point, we're going to have to weld patches in it, and then bring it back online again, so.
So you're going to be seeing a general fund administration charge, but yours is going up 31%.
Is that because of the step?
It's partly because of the warehouse personnel being allocated on the basis of relative percentage of inventory, so yes, his inventory has gone up relative to other people's because of the step. Also, it's partially the risk management money that they have not put in.
Yeah, that was 6%, okay, we went through that one with electrical, it was about a 6% increase, so this was 31.
Right. I mean, again, I, I, basically, we put all the general fund costs in there, everyone reassesses annually how much time they're spending on, if they're not based on some objective measure, so we certainly had departments look at it and say, again, with the step system, for instance, the city attorney's office has been spending, you know, more time on water and sewer than they have in past years because of the step system ordinances and resolutions that have to go through for financing, so it's not just a, it's not, you know, I.
And John O'Brien mentioned yesterday that they're having to do a lot of taking apart, repackaging to put the system together to go out, right?
And the purchasing requirements have gone up as well, so.
Yeah, and they've been doing a great job. I mean, they really, we, we, we all sat down and went through this thoroughly while we were putting it out there, and, and there's a few things that both warehouse and, and us think that we can improve to, you know, reduce some of their time in the future, and we'll package them differently. Next order from Aranko, we'll probably take five of those items that are very common and have them, box them into a box, so instead of, you got all the stuff on the shelf that you got to pull in order, you just grab the box, you know, and has X amount of stuff, so, so instead of 20 items, we can cut it down to maybe 10 or something like that to reduce time, and, and then. time and, and inventorying and stuff like that. So.
One of the things just also that the mayor had asked for yesterday, so I'll try to pull it together for tomorrow, was a comparison from last year to this year of what the different departments in the general fund are charging out to other people. But, you know, it used to be, it was just a number and it never got looked at.
Yes.
And now each department actually looks at it, looks at it for me every year and says, hey, this is the kind of time we're actually spending on these other funds for real reasons. But I'll try to pull that comparison together. It will help.
And one, one more question, Rob. Sewer impact fees, we're showing a 7%, 70% increase?
Yeah, this year we had a lot more-
Page 166, sorry.
Yeah. We had a lot more building, I guess, going on this year than last year. So we've gone up, if you look at our actuals right now, we're at, we're at our budget amount. So, and then what you're going to have too is, moving forward, those individuals that choose not to take advantage of the sign up and save program and then get caught two years later, they're going to have to pay their impact fee versus getting it as a credit. So you're going to see a little-
You're going to see it the next year.
Yeah. Yeah. No, this year was, there's a lot more growth going on. Yeah.
Right.
Page 206 on the Capitol, there are two truck 530 and 532 to be replaced. 450, I'm not really questioning it, it's just they're expensive trucks. What are they, dump trucks or what?
What page is that?
206 on the Capitol.
I think those are, yeah, it's a 2550s. They are dump trucks. And they're actually, we call them mini dump trucks because they're not a gigantic dump truck so that you can work, people can work off of the side of them. And we, your 206 is different than my 206, I think. But-
Solid waste heavy vehicle replacement.
That's not me. That's public works.
That's solid waste.
It is indeed, public works. I'm sorry.
But I do have two 550, dump trucks that I am replacing.
And yours are different than his.
And they're different and they're 20, one of them's 21 years old and I think the other's 22 or something like that. And they're very old vehicles. But, and, and the reason we decided to go ahead and, and buy them now, because we're actually still using them, is with the step equipment that we're, we bought, there's trailer mounted. We're, we're running into a problem is we don't have vehicles to trailer that stuff out there. So if I buy them now as replacements, then we can use the other ones just for the step program.
Replacement?
And then replace them. Yeah, it should be under 9,010. And probably 109,010 and 109,011, they're $60,000 apiece.
Yeah, there's 100s.
Page 174.
Right. Right. And if you look at it, it says-
174 and 177 is the other one.
Right. And I think the dates were in there that we had on them.
Rob, where do you keep them? I have not, where do you store them? Are they out of the warehouse or where are they?
All our equipment is over at the field services complex by the water plant. So when you turn in, as you're going to the water plant, you keep going straight and it's the building on the right hand side.
Yeah, okay.
And there's a barn. We call it a pole barn, but it's a barn out there that most of all that equipment's parked underneath.
Do we miss a pump, um, equipment cost increase that I guess things that we were originally going to buy in 14, 15 and didn't, it got pushed off to 15, 16 and the prices all went up?
Where yet?
I'm sorry. Page 111, the top, the high service pumps and the transfer pumps.
Oh. Now, what happened was when we talked with the vendors, the, when we talk with vendors and we talked with, that we're going to buy them from, a lot of them will, will work with people to, I buy a pump and they, we, they come in and they pull the well, the pump head off, they take it out, recondition it, put the pump on it and bring it back. But when we went to bid, because we require bonding, these vendors can't get bonds. So they won't do that work. So now we've had to go step back, cancel the bids, and now we're going to go out and buy the equipment and then go through to the same type of vendors that they were going to use and work with them to pull the pump, redo it and do it that way. So that we got to break it into actually two different types of projects than what we originally looked at. And that's what happened.
Thank you.
The odor control expansion was budgeted in 14, 15. Didn't happen and now it's in 15, 16.
At the water treatment plant. Yes, we're going to do that. That's the one I was telling you I just visited. So we should start design on that and do it at the same time we're going to do the RO plant. What I'd like probably to do would be buy the equipment and then do a change order with whoever gets the RO plant expansion, the contractor, just to do the install.
Water there?
Yeah. That way I don't hold anything up waiting on the design of something. And it's not that much money for the construction.
How can we need new wells for the reverse osmosis? Are they deep aquifer wells or what are they?
The, the wells that we currently have, seven of them. Two of them you can't use for the RO plant because they're a steel casing and you can't get iron into the membranes. So the other five we can. And we will utilize those five. However, if you are running that RO plant wide open, you're going to use all those five and then you really don't have a redundant well. And, and one of the wells, when it was originally drilled back in 92, was crooked. And we've inherently had problems with that well. And right now the production is off on it again. And we're going to have somebody come in and try to redevelop that well. So I went ahead and budgeted for another kind of as a-
These are deep, these are the-
Yeah, these are, you know, 400 and something feet deep to 600 feet deep. Yeah.
You have to cleaner water in these.
Well, that's, you're into, it's not really cleaner water, it's just the quantity of water you can get out of it. And you don't impact anybody. I mean, you might impact. The one thing that benefits us where we're at is we really don't impact the agriculture users because there's no more agriculture around here. And we're the last bit before we, it goes out to the continental shelf. So, you know, we do okay where if you're further inland and you start conflicting with agriculture, then they have a right to oppose your well being constructed.
Yeah, well, how many gallons of that do you-
Those wells are all over a, right at 900 to 1,100 gallons per minute. So you're talking about 1 million to almost a million and a half per well. So, you know, they, they produce a lot of water. So. And don't forget, when I talk about four and a half million gallons of treated water, you got to add in that 15% of that goes as waste. So you got to add to that. So I'm really pumping, you know, five point something million gallons of water out of the ground to end up with four and a half million gallons.
So you're going to end up with more down the deep injection well or what?
Yeah, right now I think we do point 235 million gallons down the injection well. So you'll probably double that number when you're running. Now, it'll be three skids. So most of the time, you know, without the drought, you'll probably be running about 3.35 million of, of reverse osmosis water and about two to two and a half million going through the lime softening plant. Then when we hit these drought conditions, you know, for probably the last month and a half or two months, you, you would have been running all four, you know, four and a half million through. And then probably we were hitting almost seven and a half here a couple, so you'd almost be hitting three through the lime softening. So, I mean, I've had, when it's really, really wet, when we had that Fay hurricane, or tropical storm Fay come down, we were below 3 million, or below 4 million gallons a day. And you figure when irrigation is all the way up in Europe, it's seven and a half, there's a huge irrigation demand in this town. So, you know, if you look at, we were only using potable water to flush toilets and, and do cooking when you were all in it. Because you had, what was it, almost 12 inches or 20 inches in, a day? So, I mean, everything was underwater, nobody was irrigating. So, yeah.
And, but you can't use that 15% for reuse.
No.
First of all, it's the wrong spot.
It, not only is it in the wrong spot, but by the time you concentrate that water, your, your salt content is so high that-
Would kill her.
Yeah. Yeah.
It'd cut down on demand?
It would cut down on demand. It would, it would bring to life zero escaping real quick.
How much salt does it have in it?
When we get it out, it depends on the well, but, but as the well degrades, it gets up to about 800 parts of chloride. So when you concentrate it, you're up over 4,000, I think, somewhere in that range. So nothing's going to, yeah, it's going to be pretty tough.
Mr., what else you got?
I'm done.
Did you want to talk tomorrow?
Uh, take a motion in adjourned?
Thanks, Rob.
Okay.